And to the Republicans, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please put your cell phones on silence. And then we would like to have Ryan give us the World's Best Workforce reports.
Always riveting every year. And you've heard it since then. Um, so you have copies of the World's Best Workforce summer report and there are extra copies out on the back table as well. Um, I did do some slides just to kind of go through that piece. This is the final year of the World's Best Workforce legislation. The new legislation that takes its place is called the Comprehensive Academic and Civic Readiness Legislation.
Sounds hard to say.
It is, it is, exactly. So we're still working on acronyms as well for it. The legislation itself in terms of like types of goals are very similar in nature in terms of we have goals around literacy. We have goals around mathematics and then goals around career and life readiness. So what students are graduating with and make sure that they're ready to enter the world, whether it's a workforce, four-year degree, two-year degree, whatever post-secondary option people are looking for. So the World's Best Workforce presentation though is last year's information and there are five areas in the World's Best Workforce. The first area is around school readiness. We did two goals, uh, we did the last three years, these goals, looking at um, something around engagement with community. And so this last year we looked to increase the number of kids screening. Just to looking at that kindergarten readiness, have we have families that don't always use preschool or always use some sort of programming before kindergarten and so making sure that they've got to screen present. We actually had fewer students through last year in terms of screening, um, which is also could be looking at number of births in that area and that timeframe too. So the second goal is always around our readiness program and we continue to use TS goal, um, which is taking up those kindergarten readiness skills. Ninety percent uh, or ninety percent of our students reaching all of their goals. Um, and we continue to get almost to 100% with that. So we are looking at that, we're looking at TS goal is required in terms of of what we do our assessment on, so we're looking at our curriculum in particular and making sure that there are other uh, skills we should be adding to this as well in terms of getting ready for kindergarten. The second area is, this is known as the read well by third grade. So it's around literacy in particular. This last year, we started to expand the goal. Previously, we really looked at third grade because that was an MCA score. We looked at that, so that was the first MCA score they took. We looked at our data from K one, two, and three. We are really moving towards monitoring what is that progress from K one, two, and three as we progress up. For kindergarten and first grade, we use word study information or word study data. So that would be like your um, how they build words, how they know their words, uh, whether that was a spelling test or whether that was phonics based. And previously phonics has been uh, very little in the reading wonders curriculum. And so that is a big change now coming into this year. So we are moving uh, to away from that curriculum. And so we expect this change act to be greater into next year as we go through. But in terms of kindergarten, um, we continue, I'll get to the results in a second. Round word study, first grade around word study. Third and fourth grade, looking at our STAR data, which is our previous assessment data, um, and how they did. We met the goal for kindergarten. First or first grade, we continue to have that as an issue and that's part of the changeover to UFLY. And so um, that data in terms of what we're looking and what we're measuring with is has been our biggest concern. Of it's not measuring what we need to measure and it's not telling us our proficiency. Because then we see third grade and our third graders were leaking. We need to see that score be a lot bigger, but
So you're saying the disconnect.
The disconnect in first grade in terms of that data. This year's data will be driven by UFLY, which is our new curriculum and that is progress monitored weekly. And so we have data as we are progressing all through the fall.
Is it the wrong data?
I would say in first grade, yes, it's the wrong data. Yep. So this is the, the curriculum in, in terms of where you had a letter, right? And the letter progressed through is your reading level. Not the reading part of it, but it was to word study. And so in particular, in first grade, if you're a parent and your kid was at a G, right? G's number of skills was this thing was huge, right? In terms of fourteen, fifteen different skills. And so one kid could have this skill, but another kid has this skill that's not working. UFLY isolates every kid to the skills that we're missing and we fill those holes. And then you can see in terms of third grade and fourth grade, they get to a more standardized assessment. It's a digital, uh, with third grade, we met, with fourth grade, we did not meet. We were close to it, but we, we did not meet the, the finals. The third area is the achievement gap and we talked really heavily at the district leadership team around this. We really struggled, socioeconomic is where the gap would be for us to look at. But in terms of teaching and in the classroom, that's protected data. We don't have that piece of it, but we really looked at our system as a whole. We need to continue to work towards how do we get our math and reading scores up? And so we set those goals for reading and math at the elementary, the middle level in terms of overall. So the previous goal area was on that grade level completely. These um, were on the entire elementary, the entire middle school, right? With our um, elementary in terms of math, we set a goal. We set it separately for middle school and then for reading, we set it separately for elementary and we set it separately for middle school. The result that we have is that we met in all four of those goals. So the elementary overall, every kid that took the STAR math assessment, um, we met the goal. Seventy-four point eight percent. From a goal of sixty-five percent, so almost 10% higher. We set the goal for math in the middle school at forty-five point eight percent. We got forty-five point eight nine percent. So we were pretty spot on in terms of our goal for middle school. For our elementary and reading, we set the goal overall for fifty point three percent. And for our overall in reading, we were at fifty-four point six percent. And then for middle school reading, we set it at forty-eight point two six percent. And we ended with forty-nine point one eight percent. So we, we focused on those pieces, we focused on our intervention to collectively as a whole. We look at that and say that is not nearly high enough in terms of what our, what we need to have for reading and math proficiency. So that is one of the biggest drivers for the change in elementary in our reading program. So and we'd have the REDAC that's driving a lot of it, but we were moving on those pieces even the year before the REDAC went into play. The last two areas, so the fourth area is on career college readiness. And so this is that PLP, the personalized learning plan, um, that we are actively trying to get more and more students into that planning part, especially ninth through 12. So we have a, a program called School Lakes. Our goal is to get to ninety-five percent of grade nine through 12 students. In there, we achieved ninety percent. And so this is something that for the last two years has been in ninth grade and we continue to build up from there. For those here in the DLT, we've had the conversation around those 11 and 12 gooders taking PSCO and some of those things, trying to get kids to capture that information. It takes a little bit, so we, we listed that one, this one as we are on track, we're moving towards that. This year we'll have three grade levels, all who have done it as their freshman class and continue. And then the other goal around vocation ready indicators, this is an ongoing, we're not completed with this one yet. This is um, uh, our data warehouse prolific is actually capturing all that information. So then when students have a uh, job shadow or they have a work experience or they have a workplace Wednesday where they go get information about a job or a career in the future or they're getting dual credit, so they're getting college credit. We collect that information. Our goal is that every kid leaves here with some value add. That they either leave here with college credit, they leave here with a certificate or they leave here with um, a job shadow or some sort of job experience. If they have all three, that would be even better, right? But the goal is that every kid leaves here with some sort of value add. The final area is for World's Best Workforce is always on graduation and this is the one that is probably the most frustrating. Because the state is the actual one that calculates this. Last year's graduation rate has not been released yet, um, but it's due in December. And it's usually released in January or February. Our graduation rate, so our students that we had on the last day going through graduation, we were at ninety-seven point five percent. The last few years at the DLT, we have set this at ninety percent. We've just kind of kept it at that, that piece of it. What happens at the state is depends on when a kid comes to us. And so if a kid comes to us in mid-year of their 10th grade year, they don't count as a student in our graduation. They actually count where they came from, where they had the most schooling. And so the, the state looks at that as, as an equalizer on that piece of it. The extreme would be the senior that comes to us in the fall. They had three years of school in some other place. And so whether they didn't graduate or did graduate, their data is counted towards that other school they came from. The lag time is probably the biggest complaint that we have in terms of getting that information back to us. But in terms of where we're at and the kids we have on the, on the day of graduation or in that last semester, we run pretty high, which is good, which is great. The goal is always a hundred percent. We know that life happens and we have to help some kids get there and sometimes they take longer than four years, they take four and a half. Questions on the World's Best Workforce? I presented on the World's Best Workforce when it went into legislation and so I'm pretty happy to send this last one too.
Yeah.
Are you done with it and we'll start a new one?
I do, I will listen. I like the air emphasizing that while we met our goals and we're at that fifty percent, but yes, we met, but we're not happy. You know, I thought it was numbers and just kudos to you for making changes so that we can get up on sixty, seventy.
And it's other schools too, it's not just us.
No.
We're all across the state.
Yep.
Like that.
If there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make them.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, opposed? We'll start the next meeting with two minutes after the agenda.
Do you have a list of the donations?
I do need that, but I do not have it. My computer is dead today. Apparently somebody unplugged it.
Hi, Tommy. Yeah, it was a big mess.
Yeah, the booster club as well. Booster club donated eighteen grand.
What? Total, I mean throughout the year or?
No.
Just, just recent? That wasn't part of that meeting, that was.
I know.
You get figured it out, didn't you? Like eighteen grand seems like a lot.
Yeah, there was a lot of requests that way.
But it's in the, it's on the one on the computer. I don't remember what it's gonna happen.
That's supposed to, should be close to eighteen.
It is.
Thank you. Eighteen thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
And all assigned to whatever thing it was for.
Uh, yeah, I think it was ten grand, baseball and softball.
Were there pitching, were there batting cages or what? We should probably not bring that up.
Call this meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to this agenda?
Sure, nope, good.
Alright, then I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, opposed? Is your comments? Well, thank you for coming. Enjoy. Consider the consent agenda, the minutes of the previous monthly board meeting, monthly cash flow, including investments, the monthly bills paid, the monthly bills paid in the activities accounts, donations, which we have three thousand five hundred for Brainerd Recreational for Spence, Special Ed. Brainerd Lions for two hundred dollars, Dorcas for two thousand. Oh, and multiple times, two thousand once, twice?
I think they say elementary, middle school, high school, school supplies needed or something.
Oh, yep. Elementary for school supplies, middle school for school supplies and high school for school supplies. And then also to the Pilger Husky Booster Club, eighteen thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Thank you to all of them. And then also the personnel summary sheet. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
One hundred percent.
Beautiful. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Special board reports with possible action. Uh, we'll start with personnel, we did not meet. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, not at the time.
Then we will move on to curriculum.
We did not meet, so I mean, we did have the draft.
It's a rock show today, I like it.
There you go. So I gave you guys a copy, some of our reporters, it's just a summary of the DLT, but I gave you a copy of the slides as well, right? Within the DLT, we use that for collecting feedback on programming pieces, um, on feedback, just on setting goals and things like that. So the last few pages on the slide deck is feedback that came from that meeting. But just to kind of go through the summary, the first thing we talked about is World's Best Workforce and we went through that initially summary report. We have that presentation, we have this presentation and then October it gets submitted to the Department of Education. And so within that time, we collect any changes, any tweaks, spelling mistakes, things like that. Just to make sure that we got everything in order before we hit submit. The, with that continuation of data and talking about that, we looked at the regional MCA assessments and looking with that, I put that in the October meeting last month. And so you guys saw that, um, we really are kind of the middle of the pack in that piece of it. It's something that we would like to continue to push ourselves so that we are in the upper, um, above where the state level is. But also just looking at things like reading in particular, we want to make sure we're well above that fifty percent mark. We talked about schools in a school and looking at that, it's the second year of school within a school. Looking at that programming in particular, we increased math in um, in reading or language arts time. In the school, that was one of the, the factors we looked at, what could we make an adjustment to? We've done curriculum, we want to make sure, how do we get more time? That, we feel like if we're making progress, we're moving towards that. Into our second year, we did, we took a couple things, but not too much. And um, so we're happy to see more time being put towards those skills. Talked briefly about Fastbridge, that changeover, we talked multiple times at the school board level as well. The change from STAR test to Fastbridge was a requirement for us to do with the REDAC, but also we changed over for mathematics as well, very similar to the STAR assessment. Career programming, I think those are some always for me the exciting ones as well. We have a CNA program that is going on. We had uh, four or five kids graduating through that or get a certificate last year. We have four kids waiting through this semester, we have four kids registered for next semester. So continuing and pushing that career side of it. We have a CDL program that'll come along, come online in the spring for the coursework side of it. And so kids can get all the coursework done before they get the behind the wheel. We don't have that set up yet, but that's something else that's important for us. So looking at kind of those things as we go and then School Lakes, as I mentioned in World's Best Workforce, is a big area that we're pushing.
I suggested a couple other forums like that to Jason.
Yeah, and we're looking at more and more things. We've got the CNA and the CDL through the Youth Skills Grant. And so looking at how do we expand that out as well. Again, that value add piece is how do we get kids a certificate? So that when a kid graduates from Pilger, they have the leg up, right? They have that in hand. We do that with ServSafe, we have our courses, we need to make sure that we have that across the board. On the backside, we talked food service, there's a wellness committee that, that is being run through food service. So got feedback, got more feedback at the DLT as well. And then the last thing, we, we ended the meeting talking about PSCO versus CIS. And this will continue to be a conversation piece. PSCO costs just continue to rise and the, the requirements to get into PSCO have changed and really have gone away since COVID. A lot of that ended and so looking at what do we offer in CIS, which is college in the schools versus a student taking PSCO? And really looking at how do we advertise that programming so that we know that? Otherwise, we're looking at students taking the PSCO courses. In some cases not ready to be out there independently, they don't have access, their parents don't have access to that at the college level. Where in CIS, they still have that access to how they're doing and how their student's doing. And so there's a lot of things that we're looking at to really encourage families to look at CIS and say, this is the better option for you as a high school student. PSCO has its place. The question is how do we manage this growing number of PSCO?
I, and I wish it would change at a state level. The fact that they took away um, needing to pass an act place or to get in to the college class is ridiculous.
And one of the things.
To have a basis of being ready. And then also the fact that you can apply and start taking and the schools have to pay for spring classes before anybody ever knows that you failed out or withdrew from all your fall classes is asinine.
The, the timeline is not.
And then they ship it back to you.
To any high school, the college and the K-12 timeline is not aligned. And that is across the board, across the state. And that is something in particular that we have to look at.
State level.
Can students that just take CIS classes, can they get an associate's degree then? Do they have to do PSCO?
They can, you can get an associate's degree through CIS classes, PSCO or a combination of the two. The thing that um, we have to do more and more is to look at what is that PLP? What is that planned beyond? There is, there is advantages to getting AA degree and there's a disadvantage to it as well. So when that student is looking at, and so two that came to the DLT, we talked about this, that they, they kind of talked about their experience with me and that like getting that AA degree and stamping that AA degree, they both have the plan to get a four-year degree though. And so they've taken classes that they didn't need to take in order to go into that four-year degree. So advantageous to get the college credit, not necessarily to get that AA degree.
It always depends what you're looking for, like I got.
Exactly.
I got mine through school when I was here and I went to NDSU and I lost points because I had not.
Because you had it done.
Correct.
Right. And the, the one student that, that I talked to and he was great, we had a great conversation. He is going to start his first semester next year as a part-time student because he doesn't have any classes to take. Because he, he had taken them previously. And so some of that is just working through that process. They can get super close to it with that two years of, of college credit, but not necessarily to say that I got this completed, we want to continue it up. There is the advantage though for a student that is looking at, I want a two-year degree and be done, right? And then we want to make sure that we, we've helped them open the doors they need to open.
I just think you should highlight too, we, we asked two questions of the DLT. That, you know, should the district continue looking to expand those, those programs and offerings here? Whether it might be trying to, you know, trying to do something more online here by hiring part-time people that have the credentials to teach those and you see there that eighty-eight, eighty-six percent said yes to question one and seventy-one said two. So, you know, we use that DLT, DLT team to drive some of our decisions that like such as school within school. That generated from the DLT, not so much from the board or from us. We bring it up to that team and then that's, you know, we have parents on that, we have students on that, we have staff members on that. So when we come back looking at the spring and maybe we hire a couple of part-time people and we have to look at our electives and what we can offer and what are kids taking, right? If, are we offering things that kids don't want to offer or don't want to take? That might be some adjustments that we make as a district based off of that. So that's, that's good information for us to say, you know, the DLT also decided that this is something we should do, not just us or the admin.
And the other thing that came out of the DLT meeting was uh, I mean, even one of the CIS teachers explained her rigor in her class. A lot of kids don't want to take it because it's more work than taking a PSCO class.
And that's, that's the information that we're, we're collecting also from kids is that it is what's the difference between me taking it as a PSCO or versus CIS? There are obviously a huge number of kids that take online and the flexibility in the schedule is a big piece.
Kids that make work.
Two guys I talked to that they, they have a job and they work part-time throughout the day, but then they can do their coursework at a different schedule. And so that's something that we have to adjust to the reality of the future.
And all of their coursework is out on Monday and they.
And it's, they have a couple Fridays to get it in.
Yeah, it was interesting. I liked the ones that were in, having them speak for themselves was phenomenal.
Yep.
I liked it. Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you, sir. Anything else from the curriculum committee? Policy did not meet. Activities?
We did meet, we met today for two hours, hour and a half, an hour forty-five minutes. So with that, you guys have a packet on your table that is, I'm going to highlight. I'm not going to deep dive, I had to make sure that everything, you guys have the information that you need. You can look at it, if you have any questions, give me a holler. Otherwise I'd be sitting here for thirty-five, forty minutes explaining exactly everything that's going on, okay? So we started off with the fall activity summary. Numbers and results are on the top page. Cross-country girls, Elena Dobson um, broke the state of school record for Pilger on cross-country.
State and school or?
No, just school, sorry. Yep. Football finished seven and one, volleyball had eleven wins. Then we went on to the coaching evaluations. They are completed. Formal write-up will be um, coming soon from Weir, uh, Weid, Mon. Then we met, uh, or talked about the changes or needs for next fall. It looks like as of right now, they were going to look at extra coaches for volleyball, but we don't know, we're going to hold off on that until we get more determination on other schools and how many coaches they have. And student surveys are in the packet um, for every sport in the fall. So you can read up on the student surveys. They are done. Then we met, uh, we talked about the strength coach update. All teams were, had a chance to, to complete um, the weight, within the weight room. The downside to it is was the open hour of lifting for students that weren't part of a um, like basketball right now, if you don't play basketball, when you have time to lift weights. So we're looking at changing the time for kids that are not in sports to be able to lift weights. We might go open, you close in the morning.
Morning, yep.
Yeah, open in the morning. So more to come on that one. Then we went into the winter activities. All the programs are going strong right now, everything's up and running. It's the first week of baseball or basketball and second week of girls' basketball. Wrestling is up and going, everything's pretty much up and going on that side of the school. And then we talked about the co-ops with Little Falls. We have participants, we got twenty-eight wrestlers for gymnastics and four in dance. Um, and then we have a plan for ending the co-op with Little Falls wrestling in January. Then we will be full-time at Pilger Wrestling next year.
In the fall, I thought we were doing fall of twenty-five.
Early in the winter, it's winter.
This winter will be just us.
You have to end the co-op this year for next year.
Co-op is here in January.
The paperwork's done here in advance.
Oh.
But we will be full-time wrestling.
Paper saying we're ending, but it doesn't take.
You have to do it here.
I was just kind of like.
Okay, we're ending it with Little Falls, a co-op with Little Falls in January. We will have full-time in the following year. Does that make sense, son?
Yeah.
Sorry. Coaching needs, there is none. Then we went into the spring coaching additions for softball and baseball. With the students that are in the, in the uh, softball and. With the students that are in the, in the softball and baseball program. It looks like we're going to need C squad coaches for both softball and baseball, which has been, was just tremendous. We haven't had a chance to have that for many years. So participation is through the roof on that, on the baseball and softball. So we're looking at spring coaches.
Can I touch base on that, Brian?
Yep.
That will be on addition to the budget for the budget committee as a second revision to add that C squad for baseball and softball.
And that's what grades?
Ninth grade, tenth grade, that type of kid.
Sixteen, the numbers are a little over, alright, sixteen, over sixteen.
So my recommendation to the budget committee would be to make that for the revision.
And then we also talked about the activities update on the musicals, Pro Start, one act, speech, robotics. Update on staffing, everything's good on that side of it. So we pretty much covered every single activity that Pilgrimage has. Then we went into the ticket discussion. Fees were discussed. Sarah and I came up with the idea of not increasing. As of right now, we had some pushback, not really a pushback, but some people wanted to go to ten dollars and five dollars for entries. And we kind of said, no, let's stay at seven and five. But what we are going to do, what we are going to look at trying to move efficient with the lines and go to either online ticket ordering or activities or Square.
Yeah, we talked about just, I'm going to dedicate a iPad so that if people want to come and play with their phone.
Yep. Or a credit card or something like that, so they just come through real quick.
Because we don't have that.
The convenience of it and also make people move to that.
So we're going to look at into that. So we talked about the pros and cons on that side. And then the participation, our participation fees were discussed. These are all in your, in the packet. We're pretty much online with every other school in our section. Yep. So.
We are. I figured we were still low. We've always been low.
We, we are right there with every single school.
Except for Bradar.
Yeah.
Aiken was a little bit higher and whatever.
Yeah, but not much, yeah.
The most part we're right in line.
Yep. And then we went into the community education. And I'm going to highlight this a little bit more because I think Josh Smith is doing a wonderful job with the community ed side of things. The athletics is the athletics. We just don't give enough time with the community ed. The community advisory council is made up by Josh Smith, Matt Mullen, Sarah Nagel, Bob Clark, Michael Brandt, and Ben Horn. But within that, Josh has really dedicated his time and his nuances that he has as Josh Smith to build the program up. He's done a great job with it. Fall update, third and fourth grade football, forty-three registered, five to sixth grade tackle football, forty-eight were registered. Twenty-nine registered for third and fourth volleyball, fifth and sixth volleyball were forty registered. Second and third cross-country were eighteen registered and fourth and fifth grade cross-country seventeen were registered. We did have to discontinue the teen driver safety because the, he had it up and running, but the information we weren't able to get a week before a class. So we had to discontinue that one. But here's some of the good things that is going on with community ed. Women's beginner pickleball, full. It was on September seventeenth, it was full. Principals of retirement, eight were registered on September tenth. Change the outcome, opiate awareness, hundred, one hundred and forty registered. And that was on September seventeenth. Defensive driving was full with fifteen registered. Babysitting one-on-one, seventeen registered. Husky Pa art club, twenty registered, and that was full. Elementary Spanish, twenty-five registered, that was full. Introduction to yoga, seven registered. Wood mosaic, fifteen registered, and that was full. We're looking at, he's looking at doing more with that because it was a great turnout for that one. Fifth and twelfth grade art club, twenty-four registered. Beginning chess, ten registered. Adult strength and conditioning, three seasons, October first, fourteenth through December twentieth, twenty-one were registered. We don't have the numbers yet for the other two remaining. It's January sixth and March fourteenth, March seventeenth and May twenty-third. Community walking. And then we have youth sports coordinator, Katie Schaefer is going to do the winner. It looks like wrestling, we got twenty-four registered, nineteen registered for, registered for three through six. K through two basketball, sixty registered. Third and four, girls' basketball, sixteen third grade, ten fourth grade. Five and six girls' basketball, fifteen fifth grade, fifteen sixth grade. Third and fourth boys' basketball, eighteen third grade, twenty-one fourth grade. And fifth and sixth boys' basketball, seventeen fifth grade and eleventh, or eleven sixth grade. And then we discussed about shirts and jerseys, how we can update them because we're back in the nineteen forties with some of the jerseys.
We decided today it was the eighties.
I don't know, some of them smell like the sixties.
I remember, I remember that.
I'm just, we're looking at updating. We're looking at updating.
We've been talking about going to try with it. So we're really stepping the game up here.
Then classes in the planning stage, indoor pickleball. We're looking at indoor pickleball December, December through January. Principals of retirement, which I'm supposed to. American Sign Language, CPR, archery, intro to robotics, photography, and then just open gym.
Oh, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, on Tuesday, there'll be open forum on Tuesdays on our Facebook page that you can make lots of suggestions. They are going to be welcomed.
There you go.
It'll be first, it'll be launched tomorrow.
There you go. There's your suggestion. And that was it for athletics unless you can think of anything else.
Yeah, can I add a couple of things?
Absolutely.
Just to touch base on Pro Start. We changed that a little bit this year, you know, how they used to do the competition for cooking food. They're not going to do that competition this year. They're going to do like a hospitality competition where they actually, they actually create a business, create the menu, create the seating and all that. So it's actually like setting up a restaurant. So it's not, it's going to change a little bit this year and it's kind of what they felt was better, best for the team that they had. So it's still a competition. It actually probably fits our area a little bit with the resorts. So that's going to change a little bit. And then the only other thing I was going to add is that one of the reasons we had the conversation with fees and ticket prices is just, I just want you guys to be aware and the public to be aware of, just in the last, you know, three to four years, we've, we've increased our budget and activities by probably close to a hundred fifty thousand dollars by adding programs, adding coaches, adding costs to salaries, budgets, transportation. So just, you know, we've put a lot back into our activities programs and, and, you know, basically kept the fees the same, which is, which is fine. But we've made a big commitment to, when one of our goals in the strategic plan was provide more offerings and more opportunities. And we've done that, especially in the activities. And, you know, you go back five or six years, that even goes back to middle school musical and speech and all those programs that we started. So just kind of wanted to give you a touch base on that. We covered that as well.
Anything else from activities? All right. Moving on to facilities.
We did not meet. Probably meet in January. I did, did have a meeting with Wool today. Just kind of an update on the long-term facilities, plan for the summer, some of those types of things. And I've also asked him to kind of do an update on the possible weight rooms slash remodel of wrestling room and what would that all cost? Because we did a really generic one, you know, I want him to dig into that a little. Wool to dig into that a little deeper, like what is the actual cost of the remodels of those two rooms as well? So he's going to do that and we can have that presented for facilities in January.
They're fine with what they have. That was the agreement.
That was the agreement.
At this point, yeah.
That was it.
Pretty short.
Yep. All will be well.
Very happy. Anything else from facilities?
No.
Just trying to grow the company.
But when you make an agreement, you try and stick around.
Well, and that's not, it's not really coming from them.
We needed one when not we started the UCL.
I would say it's coming from us as well. You know, the weight room is not sufficient for what we have. So there's that driving that as well. So I think there's a little bit of that.
Budget.
Budget, we met on the eleventh and we basically did the audit, went over the audit information, which Missy is going to probably be her opening, maybe presentation of your business manager report.
Small report.
Oh, you have a report too. Okay. I'm ready. If you want to go, if you want me just to-
I didn't know if you wanted to go through the rest of the-
Well, we don't have a whole lot else that was on there. We went over the audit. We reviewed student ID balances and fundraising updates. Not really anything to share of highlights.
No, I don't need, I don't need, I can't.
Yeah.
Did you read a ninety-eight?
But it was good though. Our numbers looked really good because of our staffing.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're cool. Get through our presentation here. So, sorry, gave me a PDF and now the slideshow, so I gotta scroll through. To start the audit process and the opinion, so we received an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is exactly what we want. And then as far as communication, the audit went smoothly. We do have a positive working relationship with our auditors. They did not know anything unusual in the terms of any of our recorded transactions that they reviewed throughout the audit. There were some significant estimates for the net pension liability balances and the net old head liability balances and payoffs to from ten to P. Now, I'm just going to note that the pension liability and the old head liability, those numbers are all done by our actuary. So that's where those come into play every year. And then this year, there was a new accounting standard that was adopted for accounting changes and error corrections. So it took that into consideration as well throughout the audit. Okay, so internal controls. So because of the size of our district, we always have an issue with our segregation of duties. It's just very common for our side. We don't have enough people to disperse multiple duties to. Audit adjustments, there was various adjustments that were recorded by the auditors during the audit process, which again is pretty normal for the size of our district. And then the financial statement preparation, our auditors do prepare financial statements for us, which again is hard for our side of our district. Very common. Okay, as far as Minnesota legal compliance, so they don't do our contracting, our bidding, our depositories. Any conflicts of interest, our public indebtedness, claims dispersance, our UFAR compliance, which the UFAR is how we hold things to the state. And then any miscellaneous provisions. So going through all of those categories, they weren't able to find anything that was non-compliant. Again, that's exactly what we want. So because we, so with our federal funding, we, they have a threshold of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So if you earn more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in revenue for federal dollar a year, you also have to go through a single audit as well as our state audit. So this year, we, they decided to look at our child nutrition. They also gave us a clean opinion on the child nutrition. And then they, they did find in our, our meal claims that some of the numbers were incorrect and we tailored that back to a report we're getting out of our student ID system. And they calculate, the totals that they were using were calculations at the bottom of the report and that's pulling another number from somewhere else. Which our GNC system wasn't able to tell me what that number is. So we're manually calculating the numbers. Which it really doesn't make a big difference right now because all of the student meals are free. So all in all is. It's something that we're changing for future reference, but it isn't anything that's going to take any effect financially on the district. And has been corrected for the future. Alright, the next page is just showing you our student numbers. So as you can see after COVID, it kind of took a little dip. And ever since then, we've kind of been tapering upward. Okay, so now we get back into our general budget, so the analysis and the budgetary comparison. So this is going through, it's giving you a comparison back to twenty-twenty. But it shows you, the blue is revenues and the red is expenditures, kind of showing you where we came in at the end of the year. And then this is where we were budgeted. So the final numbers, so revenues came in, so this is about seventeen eight million. And expenditures came in at about a flat seventeen. So putting an additional eight hundred thousand dollars back into our banking account. Now, go into this a little bit further on the following pages here. So here, we got the detailed revenue analysis. So now you can see the breakdown of the funds and where it's all, where the money is coming from. So the state sources, so red is the twenty twenty-four and then the green is what we budgeted. You can see what we budgeted is a little lower than what we came in at. And that is due primarily to our special education. So special education revenue is kind of a wild card, which is a guess. It's, there's many complex calculations that go along with it. So we try to get as close as we can, but it's also a year in arrears by the time we receive the funding. So it's, it's, we do the best that we have. And then everything else was pretty close. Local levy, or local property tax, local levy, and then federal money. Now, the federal money you're going to see go down a little bit more next year because now we don't have that faster funding anymore. Alright, and then expenses. So expenses, again, the red is ranging for, green is my final budget. So this is just showing you on regular instruction that we are spending a little bit more on educating our kiddos. That's what we budgeted. And then down here for the capital alt link, the, you're going to see that was pretty high last year, but now we're tapering it down. And that's due to that athletic complex. So that was, that project was done as of this last school year. Okay, so now we're back into the cash investment trend analysis. So you're going to see up here, we were pretty high with cash. And remember, that was when we went out and we did the referendum project. So we had more cash then and as we spend it, the cash is going back down. And then we did the athletic complex, which may drop down a little further. And now after this last year, we are trending back upward. Alright, so this just gives you the fund balance specifications, what's in non-spendable, restricted, assigned and unassigned. So right now in the unassigned, we have two million that is available for spending. So it's not restricted. So everything that's in a restricted bucket is restricted to, it could be restricted to school readiness, community ed, like gifted and talented stuff. There's different buckets that certain money has to go towards. They can't, they can't take it from food service and over to arts, community ed. They can't go through it that way. Alright, and then for unassigned fund balance, this is just giving you the, a trend line. So last year, we had, went back down to seven point nine percent. That was intentional with the athletic complex that we did. And now with our balance, we are back up to eleven point eight. So we did adjust our fund balance policy this year to be within seven to ten percent. So we're just above that seven to ten percent where we want to be. Alright, and this is an overview of the other funds within food service, community service, and the debt service. So food service, the change in the fund balance was a little more than what we had budgeted, which that's intentional because we've had a high fund balance in food service these past few years. So that is intentional to try to spend that down because we can only keep three to six months' worth of expenses in that account. So the state wants us to spend that down. And community service, we're doing pretty good there. And then debt service, that went down as well, which is of course what you want. You want to spend on your debt. And then this is just the trend analysis for the cash and the different lines have the different meanings. So this blue- So this blue line with the stars is for our debt service, which is pretty stable. And then the building construction, we saw back in twenty twenty when we started that project, and now it's tapered off to pretty much nothing. And then food service is kind of just hold and steady there, and then community service as well is a green line. All right, district-wide assets. So we have, the blue line is our current assets, and the red is our capital. Now, have a note, this one, so the capital, so this, you can see that the capital went from three point thirty-two point seven down to thirty-one point nine, and that's because of the, the projects being completed, and now we're able to take advantage of some of that depreciation. So that's going to kind of taper down. All right, and then the next one is just going into the liabilities and where those were, the current liabilities in the blue. The red is the debt, green is the net pension liability, and then the net old cap is the purple. And then this again is just going over our long-term debt. So the red being the bonds interest and the blue being the principal. So as you can see, as we get furthered in, the principal is going to get higher and the interest is going to get lower. And then he went over another accounting standard that's going to change next year, which we're going to start preparing for now. So next year, the accounting standard is GASB one-on-one, or compensated debt balances. So at the end of this coming school year, we have to report to the auditors everyone that has time off, that is, that could potentially use it in the next year, what the balance is, at what value, and then we have to also include the FICA and TRA in that. So it doesn't matter if, doesn't matter if they can't take it with them when they leave, which is kind of been the rule in the past, who doesn't have to report it for everybody. And that was the audit report. Any questions on that?
Can I get a motion to approve the final audit?
I'll give you that motion.
Can I get a second? I'll second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just like to congratulate Missy again on a clean audit, does a great job for us, and, and appreciate all the work she's done. Good, good numbers to get back to that twelve percent, that unassigned fund balance. It's always nice to give you guys flexibility if you want to do some things with that, so it's good.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Still you, if you have more.
Uh, we didn't have anything else. Like I just mentioned, we talked about some fundraiser updates, you know, when people say they're going to earn this much money, kind of what they earned when they had set their goals. And we talked about student activity balances, and just kind of got a report on each, but not really any highlight specifically.
Anything else?
I was just going to add a couple of things. So now that the twenty twenty-four audit is done, we are going to start doing some preliminary work on the FY twenty-six budget to get started, jumpstart on that. And then some of, some of the reasoning behind that is our compensatory dollars, the calculation is going to change next year. And so that's going to be a, another wild card for us. So the quicker we can kind of get a handle on what's coming down the pipeline, the quicker we can kind of make some decisions, what we want to do. The truth in taxation meeting will happen in December, prior to the school board meeting. And at that meeting, we will also go over the levy. So the levy that we certified back in September, we'll be able to decide in December if we're going to take the full maximum or if you want. That's coming in December. Yep. What do I got?
Anybody have any questions for Missy?
Good job, Missy.
Thank you. Anything else from budget?
No, that's it.
Thank you. All right, next we need to look at setting the January reorganization meeting. Apparently Mike would like to change it from the third to Monday because I guess that's a holiday. Or going to change junior day to the thirteenth. It worked for everybody.
I'll make that motion. Set for January thirteenth. Now we have a discussion.
Yes.
I think it works.
I didn't realize it was an action. I just thought we could do it.
Colin, I also mentioned at that meeting, I would like to make a recommendation that we had this regular school board meeting on the third Monday of each month. I would suggest that, I would like to think about you guys, if we could move it to the second Monday of each month. Because two of the holidays always fall on the third Monday. So then we're always moving it to the second anyway or the fourth. So I don't, I look back at the history of why it said the third Monday, and the only I could find was it worked with the school calendar better, which I don't understand that one. And then it said because of holidays. Well, the holidays are always on the third Monday, so I'm not quite sure. So I, if, if you guys would look, like to look at your calendars, because when we do have that regular reorganization meeting, it's part of there where we say, we'll set the meetings for the third or the second Tuesday. So if you're, if you guys see that the second Monday would be okay, I would make that change into that reorganization, reorganization meeting and, and put it for the second Monday starting February, they're on fourth.
If, if we're going to look at changing things at that meeting, also I'd like to look at a different way of doing the treasurer position. More of the way the source well does it where, I mean, we can all still get the checks, and Brian and I've had this conversation, but where Brian is the one that definitely checks them all and goes through them.
And then reports that at the board.
Yeah, and makes the recommendation to move them. And then Clark would do that for previous month and then this.
Makes sense. We had this discussion already.
Yeah.
Do we have to do, would we change that on the, is that just a, I don't know if that's a change in the?
Yeah.
It's just the way we, I would think it's just a change in how we do the business of the meeting. I don't think there's anything that we changed at that meeting itself, but I'll look.
Yeah, that, I just, that's what's about coming through it up.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the reorganization meeting in January? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes.
Update from the Paul Bunyan Education Co-op Board of Directors meeting. Food was good and it was riveting.
Yeah.
Two and a half hours.
Yeah. We had a presentation on birth to three and three to five special ed and services and how kids qualify and-
How we get paid.
How they get paid. Um, then I left because my eye was bothering me, but I-
Then they got into a political discussion and-
Legislative update. Yeah, so that's about it.
That's good. Then if nothing else from that, the current events report, sir.
Yeah, we had Veterans Day program. It was a nice program again. We livestreamed that to all the classes in the school and also to the public. So it's always a, a, a nice program. Enjoy doing that. Uh, Thanksgiving break is coming up, November twenty eighth, twenty ninth. We do have some concerts also coming up in the CTC Center with Tribute to John Denver and the Elvis Christmas. Both of those are in December. Uh, Pillar Teacher of the Year will be recognized and announced on Wednesday of this week, so, um, that'll be coming up, so keep an eye out on that. Um, and then the other thing was this MSBA, you should have gotten a letter in the mail regarding attendance at MSBA in January. I don't know if anybody wants to go, but it's the deadline for us to apply or to register would probably be coming up here next couple of weeks. So I don't know what, we've talked about it in the past, we went, a few years ago we went, so, um, we didn't go the last two years, I don't think.
What were the dates on that?
I think it's January fifteenth and sixteenth, so Thursday and Friday.
Does it start Thursday or does it start Wednesday night or week?
Well, it starts Thursday, but we usually go down Wednesday night. Because it starts Thursday.
So it's like all day Thursday, Friday, remind you?
Friday till noon.
All day Thursday, half Friday.
Yeah.
Anybody, anybody?
Yeah, we've got to check the calendar. It's an option.
I, I, you know, driver, I'm willing to go.
I'd be willing to go if we got a couple of us.
Yeah, my travel for other stuff doesn't start until February. I'd be worried tomorrow.
Bridget will be down there on the Tuesday and Wednesday already for phase one and two training, which reminds me to ask you, I was going to ask you about phase two. I can't remember. Did you do that one last year? Okay, because I was going to let you know you could do that again. I didn't know if you did. So Bridget will be down there. I, I could ask her if she wants to stay another two days. Uh, I could send her a text message or an email. Um, so if you guys want to go, I can register us and stuff.
I'm, I'm going to warn her. I got to look and see what's there.
I was going to say, why don't we?
Do you guys want to email me tomorrow if you want to go or not?
I'm going to look at, we're not going to be set off, but I can probably ask and get it if there's just not.
Why don't you all just take a look at your calendar and send me an email tomorrow if you're yay or an a.
Are you thinking you're a maybe?
I'm a maybe.
You think you're?
I've got to, I'll have to look.
I'm a maybe.
You're a maybe. Oh, well, that's pretty fair.
Send me an email sometime this week and like register us at the end of the week.
No, when we did go, it was quite informative. I mean, it was, it is a nice two days of learning. Thanks, I guess.
So what time would we leave on Wednesday, like?
Probably.
We have a different times drop down separately, like I drove together the one year and you guys all came.
And I lost my car in the parking.
Oh, yeah.
And then there, like, I mean, we can, we can ride.
I couldn't find it. I couldn't remember where I parked.
This was ours.
If we go out for dinner together, Mike will not be leaving us two.
No. I think we.
So cool.
We didn't get, we didn't get.
Hope it's not that cool.
So send me an email this week and then take a look at your calendars. I like to register otherwise to go and get.
Any questions for Mike? Then I would entertain a motion for jury.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Close and bear.
Aye.
Close.
Motion passes.
Wanting to manage a D spot?
Yes.
Gun safety, so mobile safety needs.
Yes.
Find somebody to teach the gun safety.
That's been our biggest issue.